The legislature is back in session. I understand that Senator Panglinen, you made a closing remarks and so then we're going to act then on sending the old number 152 as substituted by the committee and further substituted on the floor to the third reading file without any objections.
No objections.
So, thank you very much. We have next on the agenda, resolution 160. Senator Blas, you are recognized on the resolution.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to move resolution number 160-3 ECOR to the third reading file, but I'd like the opportunity to be able to discuss it.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this resolution is actually, if not for lack of a better term, I believe is a very timely resolution. But before I get into this, I want to thank my co-sponsors, my co-authors actually too, to this resolution, my sister Senator Munia Barnes, Madam, Madam Speaker, you yourself, Senator Espaldón, and my good colleague and friend and Senator from Baragada, Senator Panglinen. Now, Madam Speaker, resolution, this resolution is relative to requesting the United States Congress to acknowledge our continuing plight for recognition as a result of the number of sacrifices that we've made as, not only as an island, but as a people, and to give us and to acknowledge this recognition by giving us an opportunity to vote on matters that pertain to Guam and to matters pertaining to the military buildup on Guam. You know, over the last few weeks, more specifically over the last two weeks, our people, you and I, along with a number of our colleagues here, have attended a number of meetings, hearings in relation to the draft environmental impacts study for the military buildup. And not only have we heard the concerns and the cries and the issues brought about by our people with regards to this, to the EIS, but also that our people, there's a sentiment that our people, that some of our people, that no matter what we say, no matter what we do, it's a done deal. And if you think about it, you have to really ask yourself, is it a done deal or is it a done deal? Madam Speaker, I think you and I and all of us in here, in this body, know the politics of Washington DC. Really, if you have nothing to put on the table, if you have nothing to show, if you have nothing to barter, to proffer, if they come and see you, they give you the Washington two-step. If you don't know what the Washington two-step is basically, thank you for coming and I see what I can do. And then you never hear of it. Because we've got no, we've got nothing to offer. We've got nothing to put on the table. We don't have a vote. This whole process that we're going through right now is as a result of discussions and participation and deliberations and eventually a vote that Guam could not and was not able to participate in. You know, in the resolution, I put as the very first paragraph to remind everybody that in 1776, the United States of America was formed because a group of colonialists believed that it was unconscionable, if not illegal, for a parliament, for a body, a legislative body that was thousands of miles away from them to make decisions on their behalf without their representation. And because they didn't believe in that and because they thought it was unconscionable, they formed their own union. They formed their own country. Two-hundred-and-thirty-three years later, we've got what is probably going to be, and it's been deemed the most, an unprecedented, the largest peacetime movement of a military force, and it's going to be occurring on our lands. It's going to be affecting our people. It's going to have effect on our future. And we don't have a say? What's it going to take? You know, there was conversations and discussions that a lot of people can say, well, you know, the way, we can't do this, you know, Tom, you know, we can't ask for it because the Constitution doesn't provide for it. There's a body in Washington that can amend that Constitution if it had the galls to, so that they can recognize who we are. And we're not asking for the whole bowl of wax. We're not asking to be able to participate or vote on matters that affect Butte, Montana, you know, or Colleen, Texas. We're just asking for the privilege and the right to vote on matters that pertain and that affect us. You know, along those lines, Madam Speaker, when we took this matter out to, for public hearings, we had it at three different places. We had one in Baragada, we had one in Jigo, and we had the other one in Mololo. Not only was there overwhelming support for this, but there was also a challenge to this body. And one of those challenges was, why are you requesting? Why don't we demand? Why don't we demand what is rightfully ours? And, you know, as the author, the principal author to this bill, to this resolution, and based on that public hearing, could have made the changes there. But I thought it best that we discuss it here. And I'm referring to, on page six, basically there were, starts on line 10, the first, be it resolved, where it says, "Imina Trentana Lesletor on Guam, on behalf of the people Guam, thus hereby earnestly and urgently request the committed actions of the members of the United States House of Representatives." Where there has been sentiment and expression, suggestion by the people that we represent, then we don't, we don't use earnestly and urgently request, we use demand. And I believe in that. How long have we urgently and earnestly requested for our country to acknowledge us, to recognize One such is, this is about sixty-five years. Things got us nowhere. And I think that because of what is happening today and the sentiments that we're seeing from everybody, I must say as well too, from the executive branch, that they don't see the federal government coming to the plate, yet we're going to be expected to continue With what? With what kind of a voice? You know, and so, Madam Speaker, what brought for that amendment now is that on page six, line 11, strike out the words, earnestly and urgently request, and replace it with demand. So that'd be my first amendment, ma'am.
On the amendment, on page six, line 11, to strike out earnestly and urgently request, and replace it with the word demand. Are there any discussions? Vice Speaker?
I support it.
Are there any objections?
I agree.
No objections? It's ordered. You may continue, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, another amendment that I'd like to make is still on that same page, where it says on line 20, and be resolved that Imina Trentana Lesletor on Guam requests that the executive branch of government of Guam also submit to the Speaker of the United States House of Representatives, and so on. But, you know, we put our foot down. We're not, yes, we're not the executive branch, we're policymaking of this. And so, really, I'd like stronger language there, as opposed to request, I'd like directs. So that there is a one voice. This is what our people want. And I'd like to make further amendments on this, on that same, but I want to take it a little bit at a time here. So that now, and I recognize and I want to appreciate the discussion that may occur, but instead of using the word request on line 20, change it to directs.
On the amendment, then, on line 20, to strike out request and replace with direct, are there any discussion? No objections? It's ordered. You may continue.
Thank you. You know, Madam Speaker, and I hope that the reason why there's no discussion is because And then, if you go further down on that same, on the same page, on line 22, after the words, "United States House of Representatives," include the words, "and leadership of the United States Senate." So then it reads, "United States House of Representatives and Leadership of the United States Senate, a letter of support."
On the amendment, to add the words after representatives on line 22, page six, the words, "and leadership of the United States Senate." Any discussion? Senator Agun, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly stand in support of the proposed amendment, but just for clarity purposes, if the mover of the amendment would like to rather be a little bit more specific so that it reflects both not only the majority leaders in the US Senate, but also the minority leaders. Because if you say the leadership in the United States Senate, we don't know whether it constitutes primarily the majority leaders because they are chairs of respective committees. And I want to make sure that in this case, it's bipartisan in terms of sharing the message. So I don't know if the sponsors...
I have no problem with that.
So, what...
They're both the majority and minority leaders.
So, what is your amendment? Majority and minority leadership?
Leaders.
Leaders?
Majority and minority leadership of the United States Senate.
So, the amendment to the amendment is to add the words, "and" majority and minority leadership of the US Senate.
And one more item, if I may, Madam Speaker, and to the mover of the amendment, also to reflect similar language with the US House of Representatives. Because right now, the letter will be directed or received by the Speaker of the House of Representatives and not necessarily by the minority leadership. So, I don't know how we want to be consistent in terms of the language, Madam Speaker, but I think that it would be appropriate in this case to ensure that both partisan leadership have access to the information that is being disseminated. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Do you feel then maybe that there should be a time to put in that general language, some of these technical...
Yes.
...language and be, you know, taken care of by legal counsel?
I have no problem with that, ma'am.
So, on that, is that a motion? No objections?
No objection.
So, then, on, so, the language then, in which the words on 22, where it says majority and minority leadership of the US Senate, that, that to include the House side as well? Yes, that's on line 22, after the words representatives, the words majority and minority leadership of the US Senate. So, we'll deal with that first and then the, so are there any objections to that amendment to the amendment? No objections? It's ordered. The second, yes, so then what it is, is that Senator Agun had made a, an amendment for legal counsel then to incorporate the minority and majority leadership as well in the House of Representatives. Legal counsel, yes, we're able to get that. So, on that amendment, are there any objections?
Nope.
No objections? It's ordered.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, and another amendment, which I think is very significant too as well, is on, actually, and I'm going backwards, and the last one that I'm going to make on this one...
On page six.
Is now on page five.
I was going to say, if you're in a row on page six, you want to look at line 15, respectfully?
Line 15.
You seem to be in a row, are you respectfully requesting?
No, ma'am, we're demanding.
Well, that's why I'm asking you at line 15.
Okay, yes. I'm not going to respectfully demand, I'm going to demand.
You're in a row, I think that you want to...
I appreciate, thank you, Madam Speaker, for pointing that out, yes.
Yes, what?
That, what, if I can make in as far as a general amendment, as far as, so here's what we're respectfully requesting, that we changed that, that language to now say that we demand.
So...
Further demand. Further... Well, not respectfully request, but further demand.
So, it's further demand?
Yes.
So, delete respectfully request and make it further...
Demand.
...demands. And that's on lines 15 and 16. Clerks, are you able to get that? Okay, thank you.
And I think that those...
On that amendment, are there any objections? No objections? It's ordered.
Thank you. It's the one pád amendment, right, ma'am? Thank you. And then, ma'am, if you go back to page five, on line seven, okay, we talk about approximately, we locate approximately thirty thousand active military support independent personnel. Well, over the, since the creation and the formation of this, we've had the Department of Defense, SICPO, actually then admit to us that, no, it's not thirty thousand, it's not even forty thousand, not fifty thousand, it's over seventy-eight thousand people, seventy-nine thousand people.
Approximately...
Approximately seventy-nine thousand people.
Not eighty? Okay, seventy-nine. So, your amendment is to...
Change thirty thousand to seventy-nine thousand.
Thirty thousand to seventy-nine thousand. On that amendment, are there any objections? No objections? It's ordered.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And you know, Madam Chair...
Any more amendments?
No, that's it.
You might want to go to page four, line seventeen, and fifteen is that it's now six non-voting seats, and add CNMI.
So, move, ma'am.
No, I mean, you, I'm telling you, just in case.
Yes, ma'am. That's right. To add the seats filled by representatives, to add after, basically, add after Guam, the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands.
Just CNN, right? It's the... Okay, to spell it out.
Yes.
So, right...
So that there is, we don't get this Washington two-step that they didn't know what we were talking about.
So, on line seventeen, after Guam, to spell out CNMI, Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands, on that amendment, are there objections? No objections? It's ordered. What about line fifteen? Five to six.
Five to six, to appropriately reflect...
So, on that motion then, to increase it from five to six, without any objections? It's ordered. Line fifteen, and the number is, is five non-voting, it's six non-voting.
Page four. And I'll work with the clerk.
Page four.
Yes.
All right, after Guam. Guam, CNMI.
To the mandi.
At the end there. Yeah. Islands. Yeah. Okay, Senator, you may continue.
And thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to my primo and good colleague and good friend from Zonia. This then also, so that we can appropriately reflect the desires and the intent of this resolution is to make, to amend the title or the, of the, of the resolution to, from relative to requesting to relative to demanding.
So, how about your title?
It's relative to demanding the United States Congress to acknowledge the sacrifices. Okay?
So, the, one more amendment on the title is relative to requesting, to replace with demanding. Are there any objections? Objections?
No. And thank you, Madam Speaker, and you know, the enthusiasm and everything that I see from my colleagues. This is a, this is a serious a matter as we can get at this time. Because we are at the cusp of an activity that's going to change us forever, that has the ability to change us forever. And it is going to be a crying shame if this body doesn't demand of that body to give us that basic right to participate fully and to be a part of that discussion on our future. There's no other time. And I can go on on this, ma'am, because I think you believe, and you know how passionate I am with this. But our people deserve this. And we deserve this, not, not just because of what they intend to do to us, but because of the sacrifices that we've made to continue the freedoms and the ability to deliberate like this. We've spilled as much, if not more, blood so that this thing that we call democracy It's just a shame that that same power does not provide us those same opportunities. And so with that, ma'am, I ask for my colleagues' full support on this, unanimous support. Because our people need this. A greater voice in the decision-making process that occurs in Washington DC. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Senator Blas, on the resolution as amended, Senator Agun, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I stand in support of this resolution, and I'd like to share why. You know, Madam Speaker, when you look at the verbiage that has... You know, Madam Speaker, when you look at the verbiage that has been changed from the time that it was initially introduced through the public hearing process, and then some of the strong emphasis in terms of modifying some of these words to demand, not earnestly and respectfully urge, or earnestly and respectfully request, but demand, I think it's self-explanatory. And I just hope that the recipients of this resolution does not in any way, shape, or form discredit the focus and the message contained in this resolution, Madam Speaker. Because, look at numbers. About 28, if I'm not mistaken, between Guam, the Marianas, and Micronesia, just since 211, since 9/11/2001, have lost their lives, either in Afghanistan or in Iraq. You want to bring it home, Madam Speaker? I believe our numbers are up to 13, in Guam alone. That tells you something about the sacrifice that our men and women in uniform provide to this country in the defense of freedom. But most importantly, it refocuses on exactly this statement that is used repeatedly, that per capita, that Guam, in this region of the world and nationwide, has the largest representation in the military and in all the wars. You know, Madam Speaker, you look at this and then it brings me to other numbers, because that's the reality of our men and women who have made the greatest sacrifice in defense of freedom, and what we're asking for is what the people of Guam, the community of Guam deserve. That's exactly what we're asking for. We're not asking for handouts, we're asking for what this community deserves in terms of what's going to take place over the course of the next six to seven years and beyond. You know, Madam Speaker, earlier this week, I had a conversation with an individual who's directly linked to this military buildup. And I shared with him my perspective about the military buildup and about the concerns of our people. And you know, incidentally, that what, that coincided with some of the hearings, and I certainly hope that he got the message. Because when you look at real hard numbers, not grants, not loans, not Department of Defense funding for upgrades of Marine Drive, Route One, because that is part and parcel of the entire government process. But if you look at the U.S. Congress for the military buildup, the most recent figures that were adopted in a budget, Madam Speaker, was $734 million for the military buildup in Guam. And how much was allocated for the local community? For infrastructure? That much, Madam Speaker, that much, for local community support. And I'm, like I said, I'm holding back from looking at some of these, the Port Authority, one of the responses was the Port Authority is on the verge of getting a $50 million loan and a $50 million IRA grant. Guess what? They're applying for that because of the military buildup, because of the need to accommodate all of these additional shipment of supplies and construction materials so that it can support and reinforce some of the military buildup activities. Would we have needed that? According to original plans, the Port Authority of Guam was going to invest about $30 million, at least for the immediate, short-term future, just to upgrade that facility, to accommodate existing requirements and for the foreseeable five to 10 years, without the military buildup. So if you really look at it, Madam Speaker, those additional resources could be directly linked to the military buildup. But then where is the commitment that's going to come or that is coming from the U.S. Congress? The Department of Defense, in this case, is stepping forward and saying, okay, we've got $50 million identified for upgrades in some areas in Route One. Hooray, $50 million. In the meantime, you've got $734 million that you're going to upgrade for facilities. You're going to dig 20-plus wells, water wells, to improve the infrastructure, the provision of water for people within the gates. What are we asking for? There's one term that one of our colleagues consistently use as she applies this military buildup concept, and that is that it's got to be a win-win situation for the people of Guam, and in this case, for those behind the gates. And that has to be the message, Madam Speaker, that this resolution presents to the leadership in the U.S. Congress. We are asking not only to be heard, but to receive the commitment that the federal government has made in terms of looking at Guam as a partner for this military buildup. That's all we're asking for. Now, that's what we're demanding. No longer, I think, when you look at the real numbers of $734 million and the community of Guam and local infrastructure buildup receives zero in fiscal year 2010, that tells you something, that for some odd reason, some individual or individuals in Washington, D.C., that decide exactly where the allocation is going, that they're forgetting that there is a community here that deserves to get some resources so that in fact we can upgrade the facilities and the infrastructure here in our community. You know, Madam Speaker, I mentioned the sacrifices of many of our men and women in uniform, and the ultimate sacrifice that they've rendered to the ongoing activities both in Iraq and Afghanistan. I've also talked very briefly about real numbers, Madam Speaker, real numbers that came out of the U.S. Congress, not out of DOD, not out of the Department of Interior, not out of the Department of Transportation, but came out of the U.S. Congress that said, yes, we're going to support this DOD initiative to relocate and reassign 8,600 military Marines to Guam, but guess what? We're going to provide $734 million this year. It's a 15, 10 to 15 billion dollar commitment on the part of the U.S., but local community, well, I guess you can get bits and pieces from here, different agencies. But we need the commitment to come from the top, Madam Speaker. We need the commitment to come from members and representatives of the U.S. Congress that will say, community of Guam, this is what you're going to get. Then the question comes, yeah, have, have we really asked? I need to give credit to the incumbent chief executive, because yes, I don't, it wasn't last year, it was the prior year, if I'm not mistaken, he presented a request for, I believe, $237 million. Thank you, Madam Speaker. But you know, Ma... This messed up, Madam Speaker, because now I lost my train of thought. But it goes back, Madam Speaker, to really starting from the top, getting incremental support through grants and loans. Guess what? A loan is a government program, and we on our, on our end have to commit to repaying that particular loan. So I don't consider that a military direct contribution or support, even though it's a government-to-government, low-interest loan or borrowing authority. The grant may be something different, but if the cost of the buildup itself is $500 million that we haven't received much, then I think, that's just an arbitrary figure, by the way, then I think that, that it pretty much speaks for itself. But I was leading up to, Madam Speaker, now that I got my train of thought back, I was leading up to, some people may come up and say, yeah, but has the government of Guam asked? I remember a year from last year, I believe it was sometime in latter part of 2008, if I'm not mistaken, the chief executive went to Congress and presented a white paper and said, for fiscal year 2010, if it wasn't earlier last year, but if for fiscal year 2010, we need approximately $237 million to start things off in terms of the requirements of the local community for this upcoming fiscal year. Madam Speaker, the chief executive presented something. At least we should get a recognition that, yes, it's a military buildup, rather than $237 million, which is what you're requesting, we'll look at providing you this much so that at, at least you can initiate some of the buildup and some of the increase in infrastructure that the community, the local community, the Guam residents need to be able to prepare ourselves for this military buildup. So I give credit to the chief executive for presenting that, but I think there's a lot more that needs to be done. There's really a lot more that needs to be done in terms of presenting Guam's issues and Guam's concerns, and that's why, Madam Speaker, I stand behind this resolution. And like I said, I hope that the members of Congress recognize that it's going to reach a point, if it hasn't already, where the people of Guam will demand that in fact we get either the support or perhaps the worst option be pursued in terms of this entire initiative. Madam Speaker, as I close, I think that there's something that really, really sticks out in my mind in terms of many of the activities, the hearings that have been taking place over the course of the last week and a half. And these are the Guam residents, and it's multi-ethnic, so I'm not going to say the Chamoros, but it's the Guam residents who are stepping forward and questioning this military buildup, and why are we proceeding with this, and what is this community going to gain if in fact it happens? And that should bring a message not only to General Weiss, who's facilitating this entire process, not only to our Congresswoman, Madeleine Bredalio, not only to other representatives of DOD, but it really should get a message that, look, it's about time that you put up or you do the alternative. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of this resolution, recognizing the strong language that is, has been provided in terms of the amendments today. And I think the underlying message is, give Guam what Guam deserves. If you call this a partnership, then let's ensure that if there's going to be any buildup, that if there is going to be any buildup, that it truly reflects a partnership, and obviously, a partnership is giving and taking and making sure, just using the same terminology as one of our colleagues, it's a win-win situation for all involved. So I stand in full support of this resolution. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator Ogden, sorry for the interruption. Senator Calvo, and then Senator Florence, and Senator Respechel, and Senator Gudmunds.
Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Uh, Madam Speaker, I also rise in support of Resolution Number 160. And as the earlier speakers have mentioned, I think this is ample time and, and it's a, the right time for the movement of this, of this resolution and for our voice to be heard. The, um, the issue of the U.S. territories, including Washington, D.C., is something that has been brought forward from, not only from, from citizens of Guam, but from the other communities. As a matter of fact, with the D.C. Voting Act that was passed by the Senate in, in, in 2009, and, and now is at the hands of the U.S. House, where again, there is action being taken in regards to the District of Columbia, Washington, D.C., receiving voting recognition in the House. I think this is something, again, at the right time, to fight with the other territories, including D.C., for this voting recognition in the House. It also comes in at the right time because we're a nation at war. And as was noted from the earlier speakers, we have members of this community that are in the U.S. Armed Forces and are now fighting for freedom, not only the war of terror for the homeland, but fighting for freedom and democracy in places as far off as Iraq and Afghanistan. And it's interesting to note that the soldiers from the Guam National Guard and our, and our reserve component here in Guam, as they fight for the newfound freedoms for the citizens of Iraq and Afghanistan, and as they fight for something that is so new and so alien to them. Uh, for Iraq, for many years, it had been run as an authoritarian dictatorship. For Afghanistan, it was a theocracy which was run by a combination of dictators and, and mullahs, religious leaders. And of course, because of military action, democracy has been imposed. As a matter of fact, if you can recall from CNN and Fox News, the pride that both the Iraqis and the Afghanis, Afghan people, when they showed their blue thumbs, showing that they had voted for their government in elections, and some of them, of course, had to pay the ultimate price, which is their lives. It's ironic that in these countries where maybe just a two or three years ago, or longer, or actually, or shorter, these countries had, um, had no understanding of what democracy was, there was no, there was no transition. And now, they are exercising that right, but there are men and women that are wearing the uniform of the United States with that American flag and the Guam seal, folks that are fighting for their freedom. And the irony of it is that when these brave soldiers that are fighting for the freedoms of the Iraqis and Afghans, when they do come back to Guam and they're back to their normal lives, when it comes to making a decision and voting on who will represent them in the highest policymaking body of the land, which is the U.S. Congress, or who will represent them in the highest administrative position, which is the chief executive, the president, they have no say-so. It is an irony. Madam Speaker, this is the right time for this. In fact, it should have happened a long time ago. And I want to congratulate the authors of this amendment, of this resolution, because if you look at the historical context of this resolution, bringing, beginning with the United States itself, the United States was a colony of Great Britain, I think they had their first official colony in Jamestown, and about 170 years before the, the Revolution. But it really wasn't until after the French and Indian War where the British Empire started saying, hey, man, you're costing too much, uh, you American colonies, so we're going to have to impose things on you. And they started making decisions in whether those folks in the colonies could acquire any more property, it had to go through the king, the crown. Uh, they started taxing every legal document, that's what the Stamp Act was, so whether it was a newspaper or, or a, or a legal document, it was to be taxed, and that would go into the coffers of the, um, of the monarchy of Great Britain. Everyone knows, of course, about the infamous Boston Tea Party, the taxation of tea. In fact, if you want, folks, tea was, that's why it's so popular in, in Europe. The reason why coffee became so popular worldwide is because the Americans, with that taxation and tea, decided, we're going to start drinking something different. But within a 30-year, 40-year period, uh, the American colleagues decided, wait a minute, you guys are imposing too much on us, this crown. And it came to the point of frustration where, of course, the, the revolution took place, the rest is history. You look at Guam, and again, I want to congratulate you folks for the context, for the, the historical reference. Back in 1917, in fact, that was my great-grandfather. They say Tomas Calvo Anderson because in those days, the Spanish surname was reversed, and my prima would know it because that's how our relation. Uh, his name is Tomas Anderson Calvo, that's my great-grandfather, who wrote, again, that it is high time that there be granted to the people respectful, loyal, and devoted to the great American nation, the same rights that have been granted to the different states, territories, and possessions are ideals are realized by the giving of that by which rights should be granted, and that is to say that defining the status of our Chamoros people. This was written in 1917. And if any of you folks have read the full address, this was, letter was sent, uh, this, this resolution was sent to President Wilson, the President of the United States in World War I. That's how long ago this was. Going forward again to 1936 with Baltasar J. Bredalio and Francisco Basileon Guerrero, again, these two patriots, again, fought for the same cause, and were trying to grant, to, to get afforded the same rights and representation of, of those other Americans in the United States. By the way, it's interesting to note, and I have to go back, that first Guam Congress was not, that was an appointed body that only had an advisory role. Those folks had no say-so in, in, in creating legislation. Those folks had no say-so in creating legislation. It was a Congress-only in name. Interesting to note, too, at that time, my grandfather, Eduardo T. Calvo, who was the son of Thomas Anderson Calvo, was back at the home front trying to help raise money and fundraising activities so that they could, again, have enough money for Congressman Bernalio and Congressman Leon Guerrero to afford their trip and stay over in Washington, D.C. So I have a great-grandfather and a grandfather, and now here we are today. We've been granted some limited self-government in terms of the laws that we can create, as long as they are not contrary to the U.S. Constitution or federal laws, excuse my apologies, when they're not in conflict with the areas of the Constitution that apply to us. That unfortunately is, makes us really not a being of a Constitution, but we're a being of the U.S. Congress, which we have no say-so whatsoever. There's been limited movement towards self-government and with that full representation of the United States, but my goodness, 1900, 1917, 1936, 2009, we are nearing the 100th anniversary of that statement made by Congressman Calvo in 1917. We're not, we're not seven years away from that. And it's, actually, it's, to me, it's a black mark and a stain in the United States of America. It's a country I love, and what the country stands for, and what it stands for is democracy and the rights of the individual, liberty and freedom. And for a country that is a superpower, for a country that was born out of an oppression of a monarchy, for it to have citizens, in quotation marks, citizens, and whether they're from Guam or the Virgin Islands or American Samoa or CNMI or Puerto Rico or the District of Columbia, for them to have citizens of a second-class stature is, especially for a period as long as Guam, is unconscionable. My dear colleagues, we are not too far removed from the celebration of Martin Luther King Day. And really, if you look at what Martin Luther King was all about, it wasn't just about the plight of the African-American, but it was what it meant to really be a part of a true democracy, and for those folks that did not fit in to the full breadth of what the American community was and what democracy was all about. And I guess it's also right timing because my good colleague from Baragada and also the other senators that have co-sponsored this bill, it is a perfect time since, again, we are still not far from the, not just a few days past the anniversary of Martin Luther King, his death, and of course, the holiday of Martin Luther King's Day. So, Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of this bill. Now is the time. Us as a people, we seem to be so important to the strategic interests of the United States and Japan. We are also on the, I'm sure, on the sites, the, what do you call that? The crosshairs of those folks that are the enemies of the United States and its allies. We are right smack dab in the middle of a lot of activity. We were surprised, we were spied in 1900 when the Americans started shooting, lobbing bombs over at Opera Harbor, and the Spanish governor thought it was a salute. And then, of course, we had a bunch of our citizens in December 8, 1941, also surprised when they thought they were safe and they were celebrating Immaculate Conception. There's been too many surprises for our people, and a lot of it has been because we have not been a part of these great empires or this great democracies such as the United States. It's time for us to not have any more surprises, and it's time for us to have full participation. So, Madam Speaker, I rise in total support of this resolution, and I ask also for that same support from my colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Calvo, Senator Munier Barnes.
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of Resolution 160. And I'd like, at this time, to thank my good brother for letting me be a co-sponsor of this resolution. And for all those who are listening, I was trying to decide how I would start my presentation, and I said, you know, maybe I should qualify my statement and specifically state that I come from a military family. My grandfather was appointed in 1970 to run the Guam militia by the President of the United States. In his namesake, a fort here on Guam was named after him, Fort Juan Munia. I am a spouse of enlisted military personnel. My husband was in the military, active Air Force, for 10 years, got out for 12 years, and in 2002, decided to re-enlist again into the Air National Guard. And he continues to do that today. My son, who is about 25 years old today, was an active military personnel. He was a cryptologic linguist. He was a Korean interpreter for the United States Air Force, served his four-year time, came back home and, again, re-enlisted into the Air National Guard and continues to do that today. My immediate family members, I have brothers and sister-in-laws and family members who are in the military armed forces and continue to do that today. I say that is because I am a military member of, I mean, as a spouse. I am included in that membership of military armed forces as a spouse to someone that's in the military. And as several of my colleagues spoke earlier, one colleague of mine said, you know, we have to make this a win-win for everybody, not just for the United States, but for Guam and those in the military who continue to serve. And you know, Madam Speaker, the reason why I stand in support of this is because it's so funny how our American family, Uncle Sam, continues to forget about us here on Guam. I've always said personally that I've, because I'm a military dependent, I support the military, I support being free, the freedoms that they do to protect what we continue to live through, the freedom to speak, to work our constitutional right, the freedom of speech, the freedom of press, and goes on. What bothers me, Mr. Speaker, wow, that was a fast change, what bothers me is Uncle Sam always continues to forget about who we are here. In this committee report, as our listening audience is listening intently, too, we even had a member of the military Army Reserves who was a veteran retired colonel, said she thought she was really informed, well-informed about Guam, the military, her being a part of that. And after listening to what has been going on between the military buildup of Guam, she said, you know what? I really wasn't informed. I'm going to read some of her experts a little bit later. When Donna Christensen came to Guam, and we wanted an audience with her, and she gave that audience to us, we only said, "Let us not forget about the people here on Guam." In the 1500s, we were under Spanish rule, Mr. Speaker. In 1898, because of the Treaty of Paris, we became a United States possession. From 1898 to 1941, I think Uncle Sam forgot about us because in 1941, after they bombed Pearl Harbor, they hit Guam. While my grandfather was out there telling everybody to get, hide for cover because we were being bombed, I guess apparently Uncle Sam wasn't with us. It took them three and a half years to come and say, you know what? God, Guam, we still own Guam. We've got to get it back. And they did, and you know what? In 19 July, 1944, they reoccupied Guam, and you know what happened? Our people of Guam were so eternally grateful, they gave the shirts off their back and continued to give, 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 and give. Today, Mr. Speaker, this very day, my colleague from Jonah talked about how strong the military is here. We continue to be a recruiter's heaven. You know, back in the other states, they're almost begging for people to join the military, offering incentives and bonuses. But here on Guam, someone said American Samoa was the highest per capita, but I think I beg to differ because I think Guam, per capita, is the highest when it comes to enlistment into any armed forces, military armed forces. Recruiters have it, it's so easy. The recruiters don't have to go out to the different villages, I mean, to the different schools, to the different areas to ask for people to volunteer. Our young men and women go there and wait in line to enlist. Believe it or not, there's a waiting list, Mr. Speaker. Today, there continues to be a waiting list in all the military branches, the Air Force, the Army, the Marines, the Air National Guard, the Army National Guard, I think they even have another branch, an Alaskan National Guard branch here. And yet, when it comes to asking our support or asking what is an "in" for Guam, there's comments from the United States to say, oh, wait, you're not a state, or, oh, wait. And I'm just saying this as simplistic as possible, I've got some of the excerpts here on what some people in the United States think that probably don't even know about Guam because some of their comments based on a congressional hearing that they had last year, some members stated that, one member in the House of Reps from Missouri stated that Guam delegate constitutes only represents a fourth of constituents of the state of Missouri and the state and other states in the Union. Another one noted how the territory never pays for taxes. Some said that we're not big enough, so our voice shouldn't count. Mr. Speaker, as my brother from Baragada who spoke so passionately about it, it hurts me to think that in planning for the military buildup here on Guam, Guam's voice has only been relegated, has only been relegated to pre-decisional planning meetings, and that every time there's a question to ask by a Guam constituent, it specifically says, you know what? We can't answer that for you right now. Things here are pre-decisional. We'll come back to you later. This resolution, Mr. Speaker, only asks to give, not ask, demands, that we be given a fair share of voicing our opinion and our concerns because of the major impacts that Guam will have to go through in the next couple of years to ascertain this military buildup. You know what? We had NAS Naval Air Station in the 80s. We had over a $600 million or $800 million military operation here when NAS was still And when the A-76 study came in, of course, they downsized. Didn't need, there probably wasn't a need for that base here on Guam because they said it wasn't needed anymore. But yet, now that they realize the sensitivity, the criticalness of how important this beautiful island is to them, they want to take control again without giving us that fair share. The reason why I qualified my statement, Mr. Speaker, is because though I support the military, I'm only asking that they share in that same respect back to us. Quit treating us like we're, like we don't exist, or like we're stepchildren, or like we're just, you know, the mistress that continues to be forgotten, and that's such a, ooh, ugly statement to say, but I feel so violated when they continue to forget who we really are and why we really are here. We have been so giving to Uncle Sam. We have been so giving, so inviting, so hospitable, so respectful, and yet, when it's time to utilize our home, they want to tell us how to do it. Rumors talk about forced condemnations of over 950 acres of lands owned by members of this native Chamoros population. Mr. Speaker, I say, anybody who believes that Guam is their home, who has stayed here all their life, who has been raised here, they're Chamoros at heart. They say that, no, only 8,000-plus their dependents will be here. They talk no more than 8,000, then 16,000, then 20,000, and at one time, it was 40,000, and then as recent as just months ago, it's all the way up to 79,000. When we gave our land without compensation back in, after World War II, so that the military can construct their naval bases, we worked with them and with open hands. But now, Mr. Speaker, these guys want to continue to come and take and take and take. And you know what? Some folks may disagree with me because they say the military buildup is going to bring so much money to Guam. There's so much jobs, so much things, economic boom will hit again, but they don't know what's behind these scenes. There's deals made with Japan that even Japan admits that we're not included in. There's social impacts that happen back there that they're not telling us about, and we know that it's going to hit us. They don't want to share with us. I don't think I've ever spoke this long, Mr. Speaker. I really don't. But as I speak before you this afternoon and before my colleagues, all I'm asking, Uncle Sam, is give Guam, give our family a chance to come to the same table and share our concerns and issues with you. and share our concerns and issues with you. Quit telling us what to do because this is our house. This is our home. This is our family. You talk about one island, one nation, one. I don't see it. Until we can come to that same table, until the Congress can come and see what we are having to be faced with after World War II, Mr. Speaker, they didn't take away and clean their mess. They left it for us to deal with. Please, my colleagues, please work and understand that Guam will be there to always share. But we have to be at that same table. We have to be able to make the decisions together and not just be one-sided. Because in order for this island to have a win-win with Uncle Sam, with the military, with our home, we've got to know that our environment is protected. We have to know that our economic standpoint needs to be adhered to. We have to know that the social impacts that will affect us has to be worked with when it comes to education, when it comes to health, when it comes to safety. We have to know that all those protocols of protections are in place for the people of Guam, our family, our home, our island Guam. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. I believe Senator Esposito, you are up next. You're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I want to commend the retiring speaker for, she's correct, that's the longest she's ever spoken on any bill or resolution before this body. And she was very eloquent in her comments and in her support for this resolution. I too rise in support of Resolution 160. And I need to say, Mr. Speaker, that the good gentleman from Baragota succinctly, in just six and a half pages, summed up what our true political relationship is with the United States of America. It's a harsh reality, but it's a reality that we must face every single day and bring messages like this to Washington, DC. It's kind of sad. It's kind of sad that we have to ask the United States Congress to move forward on a constitutional amendment to provide for our delegate to have a voting right on issues affecting Guam and issues especially pertaining to the military buildup. It's kind of sad, Mr. Speaker, that we have to do something like this. But I'm even more sad that as we move to convince our delegate and members of Congress to give Guam the true respect that it deserves in terms of asking the people of Guam to once again partner with the military, to tell the people of Guam that as we move to send 8,600 Marines from Okinawa to Guam, and as we move to spend $15 billion, we're going to lessen the mitigation impact here, our island. We don't believe that's the case. We've never once been reassured that that's going to be the case, that this military buildup is not going to have a tremendous socio-economic impact on our island. And we don't believe this to be the case because we have a governor who has not made this case for us. I'm hoping that as the governor reads this resolution, he kind of puts his framework, his thinking, as if though he was a recipient of this resolution and the message should also be sent to him. We need Governor Camacho to recognize the sacrifices made by the people of Guam. We need Governor Camacho to recognize that Congress needs to treat the people of Guam with absolute transparency, openness. Let us know what this impact is actually going to be. When the previous speaker talked about how we should partner with the United States Congress, and I want to localize this resolution too, to ask this body to reflect a little bit on why we've been saying that we're missing the biggest opportunity of a lifetime to get this message to Congress that the people of Guam have made huge sacrifices, Mr. Speaker. And how much more do you want us to sacrifice and not recognize our true political relationship with the United States and how that true relationship needs to be strengthened? You know, Mr. Speaker, we adopted a resolution in the previous year, Resolution Number 15, which outlines our federal territorial agenda. And there were several of us, including the speaker, yourself as vice speaker, Senator Calvo as minority leader, myself. We took this resolution to several members of Congress. And every time we sat there and told them of the Guam story, they were really perplexed that, you know, your community sacrificed so much, has given so much, and yet you're not given anything in return. And Senator Blas was right. The sponsor of this resolution was right. Maybe we keep getting the two-step from DC. But I think one of the reasons why we get this two-step, Mr. Speakers, is because if you recall, even before the decision was made to relocate these Marines from Okinawa to Guam, we had a governor who begged the military to come here, who said, "We're proud, loyal Americans, United States flag-carrying citizens. Please come to Guam, please come to Guam." While the legislature at that time was saying, "Please come to Guam," but you have to recognize that you have a several-billion-dollar impact that you're going to make on our island. You have to recognize that you're going to impact our healthcare, you're going to impact our roads, you're going to impact our infrastructure, our power, water, and wastewater systems. You're going to change the fabric of our island community. And you might not even recognize the specialness of Guam after you've transferred all these people here. And it didn't take the governor too long, maybe it took him a little over a year, to recognize that his invitation would now have to be followed up with a price tag. He's now gone on record, thankfully, to say that this military impact, and he's agreed with the legislature's estimates of an initial $2.4 billion impact, what it would cost our civilian community to prepare for this huge increase in population. We're trying to transmit a resolution to Congress to say, "Could you recognize the people of Guam and hold hearings on Guam before you make your decisions which affect Guam by way of this massive military impact?" Mr. Speaker, we can't even get the governor or members of his administration to recognize the need to have the legislature involved in this process, the need to have the people of Guam involved in this process. We've been asking the administration, we've been asking the governor, point-blank, to share any information he has right now with respect to his departments and agencies, comments on both the draft of the Draft EIS and now the Draft EIS. Why is it so hard to ask another co-equal branch of government to please allow us to be a partner in this? Let's work together. Bring the judiciary along. Let's bring the mayors along. Let's bring members of the business community along. Let's bring members of your administration along that will be most impacted by this military buildup. Governor, you had this delegation. You convened this Guam First Commission. And in one show of solidarity, we showed the United States government that we're united. One of the reasons why we have to do resolutions like this, Mr. Speakers, because we are not united. The administration continues to do their own thing. The legislature, we continue to do our own thing. The mayors continue to do their own thing and try to get the concerns of their respective villages out of the forefront. You know, you have different facets of this community doing their own thing. And unfortunately, this fragmented message has led to some thinking that we have to pass Resolution 160 because they're not paying attention to us. Not surprised. I'm not surprised when we have a delegate who scolds us for wanting to stand up for the people of Guam, who tells us, point-blank, "Oh, senators, you can't question the United States. Of course they're going to take care of you." How many times have we gotten scolded, Mr. Speaker, for standing up and facing this military in these high-level meetings that we've had in Washington, DC, where at the same time, we're asking what the status is, and the sponsor's been very committed to this as well, asking for the reimbursement of compact impact, the impact made to health, education, and public safety here on Guam, an obligation that has to be made whole and that was offered by the United States government? When we bring these things up, what does our delegate say? "Oh, no, 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 don't worry. You're getting more impact this year. You're getting more compact impact money this year." Well, of course, we're getting more compact impact money this year because the impact is greater. So you know, this resolution, and then people wonder, "Are you really United States citizens? Do you really believe that you're a second-class citizen?" They don't understand that Guam is an unincorporated territory of the United States. They don't understand that we don't vote for president. They don't understand, as this resolution eloquently articulated, that our delegate to Congress does not have any voting rights. They don't understand our situation and our relationship and our makeup in the United States family. This resolution merely makes us understand, makes us accept the fact that we've been a bastard stepchild to the United States. Just how much more are we going to want to ask Congress to recognize the people of Guam, recognize the indigenous Tramoros and give them a right to freely express themselves? And give us the right to fully express ourselves by way of political self-determination? This resolution is a great step. It goes very far to bring up these issues. And I know that when members of Congress read this, they're going to start to ask the really tough questions as to why the people of Guam are United States citizens, why are they asking this very thing, which I thought they already had? And so as we move to consider this Resolution 160, you know, I have a continuing message that I'd like to make to the governor. In the beginning, he said, "Military, come here. We want you here. The people of Guam need you here." "Oh, military, come here, but that's going to cost $2.4 billion." And then he's contracted, through the use of the Office of Economic Adjustment money through OEA, he's contracted a group to try to assist us analyze the Draft EIS. But because the funding source is from federal funds, this group is not, they signed an agreement that this group is not allowed to let us know exactly how technically deficient this document is. So the same people that are supposed to be on our side are not really on our side. We've let the fox in the henhouse, thinking that that fox is going to take care of us. So in this era of transparency and the technology where communication can be made over email, over the internet, it's just appalling that the kind of information posted on the internet is just information that's not going to help us at all. Why do we have to ask the administration to advise us and guide us because they have the technical people guide us as to what they've done so far in their review of the Draft EIS? But they said they can't do it because they signed a disclosure, a non-disclosure statement, that they wouldn't share that information with anybody other than use that information to help prepare comments from their agency. You know, my message also this afternoon, Mr. Speaker, is that we're doing exactly what the military wants us to do. And I've never faulted General Byss or anyone from Jipu because they have a mission. And their mission is to relocate these Marines from Okinawa to Guam. But I've also told them that they have a moral obligation to be advocates for the people of Guam and to recognize, remember one time Senator Guthers and I had a meeting with a general who's in charge of all the Marines in the Pacific? And he said to us, "What is your impression of the military anyway?" And I said, "Well, General, we'll never, ever forget why you guys were kicked out of Okinawa. We will never, ever forget why you're no longer welcome in the Philippines." And unfortunately, it's the actions of a few that kind of hurt the image of the rest. And so because of that tainted image that this military has, Mr. Speaker, it behooves them to be advocates for the people of Guam. I could very well see them being advocates for the people of Guam and then telling members of Congress that if you want a smooth transition of these military personnel, you give the people of Guam war reparations. I could see these high-ranking generals telling members of Congress that if you're going to have a population impact at one point and if its highest peak estimated to be 80,000, I could see these generals telling members of Congress to appropriate money to build a hospital but outside the military base. I could see these generals and high-ranking military officials, Mr. Speaker, telling members of Congress that we're obviously going to generate a lot of trash and we started that dump in the first place. So I could see them telling members of Congress appropriate the money to fulfill the requirements of the consent decree and pay off Mr. Manning's project in Lejeune. I mean, I could see the military advocating for the people of Guam in that sense because it behooves them to have a good relationship with the community because it only helps with their mission. And so I know the gentleman who sponsored this resolution and the other co-sponsor of this resolution, we're all going to be relentless, Mr. Speaker. We're going to continue to be relentless and not only address our concerns with the United States government, with members of Congress, we're also going to be relentless with our own governor of Guam. And we're not going to let up, I am not going to let up, in asking the governor to simply unite all members of the community so that when we do have these statements to make and we have to make them intelligently, we also make them in a united fashion so that we always put Guam first. And so I thank you for the opportunity to express some concern, but tremendous support for this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Esposito. Senator Guthers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker and colleagues. Of course, I stand to support Senator Blas's resolution. I admire Senator Blas. From the very beginning of this legislature and even the last legislature, he has been very persistent in dogging the United States government to meet its responsibilities to this community, not just with compact impact, but with other irritants that have yet to be resolved by the federal government. This resolution is masterful because it really puts before the President of the Congress the fact that we are ignored because we are not fully partners in the congressional process because we don't get to vote for president. We don't really have a voice on the ultimate outcome of this buildup. But you know, what's interesting is all of us are trying hard to do what we can to make sure that the concerns of the community are reflected in this DEIS document that we're supposed to be reviewing and in our interactions with representatives of the Department of Defense and the United States government and even Congress. How many of us have spent countless hours meeting with U.S. congressmen and senators to try to explain to them the real issues in preparing our island for this buildup? Mr. Speaker, three years ago, we said, "Where's the money for this buildup, for the civilian community to prepare?" Three years later, same question, "Where's the money?" The civilian community does not have the money to prepare for this buildup. And it sounds to me that this reality is being ignored. And it sounds to me that this reality is being ignored by the federal government. How can they expect us to build all the things we have to build to accommodate this buildup? We do not generate enough money in this community, in this government, to pay for a new hospital, to pay for new schools, to pay for the cost of more police officers, customs officers, teachers, nurses, doctors. We will never have enough money to pay for all of that. Yes, we are being taken advantage of. And the question we need to ask ourselves is, can we afford this buildup? There are some who say, "Can we afford not to have the buildup?" You tell me, who's gonna pay for this buildup on the civilian side? And then we'll have a clear picture of whether we can afford it or not. Our coffers can't afford it. We don't print money. We don't have GovGuam stamps to pay for it. We can't borrow the money to pay for it. We cannot tax our people to pay for it. Now, this legislature needs to be aggressive and outspoken. Later is too late. Now is the time. This resolution is one manifestation of addressing that need, to be outspoken, and to make it very clear what is absent from this whole process. Sure, we're all dutifully going to these hearings, and we're giving our comments, and we're talking to the folks that take the comments. But you know, I've, I've been thinking about it, my goodness, we have to justify why we don't like something to the United States Department of Defense. We have to justify why we don't like the idea of them identifying certain lands for taking, or for use, that belong to private landowners or to the government of Guam. We have to justify to them why this is not a good idea, or that is not a good idea. Shouldn't it be the other way around? Were they justified to us why their plans are good plans? It seems that we're the ones on the defensive. Why are we on the defensive for this buildup, when this is our home? This is our community. They want to come into our home and be part of our community. They have to justify that. Their role should not be to take from the community, but to give to the community, to give us plans that are workable, not to give us plans that make our people mad, and upset, and insecure, and worried. Now, I'm thinking that this resolution Senator Blas should hand-carry. Yes, you should hand-carry this resolution when it passes this legislature. We've gotta start meeting with these higher-ups there in Washington, and look them in the eyes. How many of us have written letters to them? How many of us have communicated to them through the internet? It doesn't work. I wrote to so many congressmen, and they sent me back a response, "We do not accept letters from anybody except those that live in our state." What kind of response is that, when these are the very people that have control over our very destiny? They say, "We're not gonna respond to you, because you're not a resident of my state." And yet, they wanna take over the island. They wanna control the future of our island, but they won't even entertain our letters. I've gotten that response from senators and members of US Congress. I was absolutely shocked. What are we? Well, apparently to them, we don't count, because we don't get to vote, and we don't get to vote for them. Start flexing your muscle, senators. It's not being unpatriotic to challenge bad plans, and to challenge bad ideas. It's the most patriotic thing we can do, is to let our country know that this is not the right way to approach this plan, or this issue, or this need. You need to work with us, not against us, Uncle Sam. And you all know my position, I've made it clear, I'm not necessarily against the buildup, but I'm against some of the things they wanna do. Some people have stopped me on the street and said, "Judy, just take it easy, don't worry, things will work out." No, they won't, if the premise in which these plans are based continues. They will only work out with reasonableness. Reasonableness, consideration for the host community and the needs of the host community. That's us, that's Guam, that's the people of Guam. They've gotta look at this buildup from the perspective of the people of Guam, not just the perspective of the needs of the military. Now, Mr. Speaker, there's gonna be a lot of things happening in the next few weeks, as we get closer to this deadline to submit our comments on this draft environmental impact statement, assuming it is not postpone the deadline. I hope it is. But we should not direct all of our attention just to that document. That's a document being, being administered by bureaucrats. We've gotta deal with the policy-level people in Washington on this buildup, not bureaucrats. We've gotta get our message across to members of Congress and the Senate, and the President. So I support this resolution as a beginning, and there'll be another one today or tomorrow, up for consideration on the issue of land takings. And we need to bring that to Washington also. But Senator Blas, thank you for your hard work on this matter, and you do have my support on the resolution. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thanks, Senator Guthers. Senator Pangolin, you're recognized.
This is Massey, yeah. Mr. Speaker. Speaker, if you take a look at the resolution, you'll see that I signed off as one of the cosponsors. And if you take a look at the committee of motion sheet, I voted not to pass. And of course, that appears to be contradictory, and on its face, it is. But things aren't always the way they appear to be, and things aren't, don't always appear to be what we say. I'm certainly glad the amendments made. I was at that hearing, and maybe the good author of the bill, primary authors, just a little bit ashamed that, when he talked about somebody who said, "Huffa boys, are you scared to demand your rights you're respectfully requesting?" He forgot to mention that, I think he was being spanked by the man we most fear, and the man we most want to be like, and that's our dads. So, it was his dad who said, "Huffa boy, you're just respectfully, huh, get tough." And I certainly want to say that the good gentleman got tough today, and that I stand in full support of the amended amendments, I mean, the amended resolution. And, you know, we all, I think, have people we admire, people we hold up to, that we wanna be like, and, and certainly, the career and, and the achievements of the good author's dad is somebody that he admires and wants to hope one day emulate, come close to, if not surpass. Our dads want us to surpass their achievements, we just want to come close to theirs. This resolution is something that I think we all want to come close to in the fight our fathers, and those of us who have been fortunate to have had fathers involved in the political history of Guam, or grandfathers or great-grandfathers. And we hold those men's work to be something that we want to inspire us to support. And then we draw from the work of other men and women in our history, who support and understand what we have gone through, and we use their work to bolster our arguments. We heard today, people invoked the name of Martin Luther King, and his fight for the rights and civil liberties, and demanded the justice that America holds out for all those who make America their home, and all of those of us who fall under the American flag and the Constitution of the United States. But you know what kind of pains me a little, is that we say Martin Luther King supports our position, but jeez, Mr. Speaker, how soon we forget that the very people who tell us, "You don't deserve the right to vote, we don't believe you should have it," our fathers stood up to them. But boy, when it came to, "You guys should stop celebrating Martin Luther King's birthday in this island, shouldn't recognize it as a holiday, never mind his work, it costs too much money to do so." We run, we run from standing to defend a man and his work, and his legacy, and we say, "All right, you're right, you guys..." The Chamber of Commerce who says, "You should always just save the money, get rid of Martin Luther King." They did, they did, we had to restore it. But the same people who are holding up the legacy of King as supporting our cause, when it came to supporting his legacy and his work, we decided, "No, we're gonna vote." You're right, we don't need to celebrate Dr. King's work, we don't need to celebrate the fact that who else in America are in the same situation we are, and if he was here today, he would stand up for us. But when they said, "Get rid of him," we say, "Okay." As a matter of fact, we'll do one even better, we'll get rid of Santa Maria and Camila. And they did. And they voted to get rid of that part of our history. And now today, we're saying, "Biba Martin Luther King." Our fathers, our grandfathers would never have done that, I know it. And yet, today, we stand up and say, "Our work today is supported by the work of Martin Luther King." I only wish, you know, that we become the men our fathers are, that we stand for the right, no matter what kind of pressure we are under, that we hope that to be sacred. So I hope that when somebody runs over here and says, "Man, that resolution, you know, it, it's gonna cost too much money, or it's gonna cost this, it's gonna cost that," that we don't run away from it again, because now we're under pressure to do, you know. Now, our benefactors don't agree with us, never mind the people, never mind our history, never mind our culture. Our benefactors say, "Get rid of him, forget them, don't celebrate them, don't hold them up." And we say, "Okay, okay." How are we going to even come close to achieving the legacies of these men and women who have stood in the face of adversity, opposition, unpopularity, and stood their ground and said, "Right is right"? It just pains me that we hold ourselves to be like this, and then we run when the going gets tough. How can we be trusted? How, you know, the only thing that I want on this, is I would wish that our delegate, when she gets this, would say, "You know what? I think that's such a great idea. And you know what? I'm going to sit on the steps of the US Capitol, and I'm not gonna go in there until you give Guam the right to vote. And we will elect her every year, and send her back. I promise I will." What a message. What a message that could be. And are we cutting off our face, or nose despite our face? I have trouble with the English nu examples. Are we doing that? I don't believe so. I think that would gather more national attention, if not as much as when the Congress walked out. We're not even asking her to walk, we're just asking her to sit. But it'll be a message. It'll elevate this thing to the true fight we're trying to do. And that is, either we're part of America, or we're not part of America. Either we are covered by the Constitution, or we're not covered by the Constitution. But I wanna make one thing perfectly clear, that my support for this, and the granting of a voting right in Congress to our delegate from Guam, does not mean that we have completed the exercise of our right to self-determination. It means it is a progression on the responsibility of the administering authority to develop the political rights of the people under their supervision. That's in the UN, in the UN resolutions, that they have an obligation to, until the exercise for the right of self-determination by the native inhabitants of these jurisdictions, until that happens, the administering authority has the responsibility for the progression of the political rights and institutions of the jurisdiction that they have authority under. So that means giving us the right to vote is not, will not, and should not, and does not, on my support for this resolution, means that I am satisfied that we have achieved equality, that we have achieved, or that the US has met its responsibility for the exercise of the right of self-determination by the native inhabitants of Guam. It just means that they are being good stewards of the jurisdiction that's under their administrative authority, which they voluntarily agreed to in signing on to the Declaration of the United Nations, and the approval of the subsequent resolutions for the evolution of self-determinations of the rights of native peoples. They have never objected, they never vetoed any of these resolutions. They have acquiesced, or acquivise, I think, acquivise to this resolutions. So I want to say that I am in full support of this, knowing exactly where I stand, knowing that this does not then moot the question of self-determination, this only means that the United States continues to meet its obligations to advancing the political rights and institution, and the democratic institutions of its administrative jurisdiction, Guam. And this means that I hope that everyone will commit to this, and that if we get during the course of a campaign, somebody coming up to us and said, "Hafizou, are you in support of..." "No, no, no, not really." You know, like we did the last time. Remember the achievements of those that come before us, and where we can see beyond the horizon by standing on those shoulders of those giants of early years of Guam, and the sacrifices that they endured, the ridicule, sometimes, the ridicule of outside forces of, "Why are these people complaining? Aren't they happy? Aren't they satisfied? Didn't we liberate them?" Didn't we liberate them? Didn't we give them a right to elect their own governor? Don't they elect their own legislature? Don't they get U.S. money?" All of that is the obligation that the United States obligated itself to. The United States could have easily said, "We don't want Guam as a jurisdiction of a non-self-governing territory. Give it to Japan." They gave some to Japan. Or, "Give it to Great Britain." They gave some to Great Britain. "Give them to Spain." They gave some to Spain. But the United States said, "We want to obligate ourselves to ensure, as the administering authority under the Charter and the Resolutions of the United States, we obligate ourselves to what is contained and embodied in those resolutions, and that is to advance the political rights and institutions, democratic institutions, of these peoples till their ultimate right and inherent rights as citizens of this earth. And that is the right to freely determine from themselves, by themselves, the democratic institution that they shall then be governed under. And they have that right themselves. And no matter how much freedom I give them, no matter how much money I give them, no matter how many votes I give them, until these natives people have freely determined for themselves their ultimate political status in the world community, then I have not met my obligation, and I commit myself to meeting that obligation." So this is absolutely in concert with the people's right to self-determination on Guam and in no way diminishes or negates the right or the obligation of the United States to help, assist, and provide the processes and the resources to achieve that end by the people of Guam. So thank you very much. I stand in full support of the resolution as amended, and I thank everyone for allowing me time to discuss my perspective on this. Sisus Masie.
One for that to Speaker Pangolinan. We have Vice Speaker Cruz.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for allowing me the opportunity to address this resolution. I note that the resolution has two resolves. I have absolutely no problem. In fact, I fully support the idea of having hearings on Guam for the U.S. Congress to hear how this community feels about this buildup. I think it's imperative. I was insulted last week when the Secretary of State didn't know her geography and realized that Guam was closer to Papua New Guinea and didn't decide to meet with the Foreign Minister of Japan on Guam to see what her decisions were going to, how they were gonna impact people in the community. So I support the resolve of having hearings here on Guam. But I have some misgivings, if not apprehensions, if not real concerns, about the first resolve. And that is giving this current member of Congress, who is supposedly Guam's representative in Washington, but for the last several years has been acting more as Washington representative to Guam. I'm not sure whether or not I want to give her the vote to make the determination, because I don't want it said in the future that your member of Congress was the one that said, "Yes, condemn." It was your member of Congress that said, "Yes, build it up." It was your member of Congress that said, "Yes, bring forty, sixty, eighty thousand people, diminish the proportional representation of the indigenous people." I'm not sure if I'm ready for that. And I'm gonna need the night to really think on this, to see whether or not I'm gonna vote for this resolution tomorrow. Because I am not currently, though I admit I ran her campaign, her initial campaign for Congress, I am not in support of the positions that she's been taking about this buildup. And I'm not sure whether or not I'm ready to give her this additional vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Cruz. Anyone else wishing to speak on Resolution 160? What did the speaker? Madam Speaker? Anyone else wishing to speak on the resolution? I thought, if not, I'm gonna go ahead and have the author of the resolution stand up to his closing, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do think that there was, Madam Speaker did wanna speak. And if allowed, and if she doesn't turn back into the room, I'm willing to go ahead and defer a little so that she can speak.
I will accept that.
Thank you. You know, before I close, I wanna thank, I wanna thank all my colleagues for their contribution, their discussion, their input, their anger. That was expressed. But you know what, also, I wanna take this time and out of protocol, specifically some individuals, and if I can mention them. To my good colleague from Zonia, Senator Ogden. Thank you, Primo, for continuing to serve, for defending us. My uncle, a good senator from Mingao, Senator Ada. Thank you, Uncle, for your service. Madam Chair, to you, as a mother and a wife, for your husband and for your sons, for their service. To Madam Speaker, you know, for her sisters, for their service. But also, you know, to Senator Pangolinan. Thank you for your continuing fight to make sure that, you know, our self-determination issue gets addressed. You're right, Senator. You're right. This is not the end of it. This should not be the end. This is but the beginning of it. To the good Senator from Pidi, Speaker Senator B.J. I understand your concern. But I also wanna thank you for serving on the commission that heard the struggles, the pains of our people who went through the World War II. Primo, Senator Carval. Can you thank your, in behalf to your great-grandfather and your grandfather for setting, being a part of this? And to everybody that's in here. Because you know what, Madam Chair? As was presented in the resolution of the history of our continued struggle for parity, to be recognized, to be equal, from as far back as, even earlier than 1917, our forefathers, our forefathers in this assembly set it up so that this happens today. They set this up so we can be, we can stand here without any reservation, without any conviction, and do this today. And to say this today. I'm gonna share this with my colleagues. I don't know, probably one or two of you know this. But if you can recall back in August of last year when the Chairman of the Insular Affairs Committee or the Natural Resources Committee, Chairman Ray Hall, was here. One of the questions, conversations I had with one of his senior staffers was, "When the chairman is here, are you, is there gonna be any discussion about compact impact reimbursement?" This was in your office, Madam Speaker. This was on a Monday. And I was assured, "Don't worry. While the Congressman is here, there's going to be that discussion on compact impact." Then on Wednesday, we all, some of us were up at University of Guam when the chairman gave his lecture series, was part of the lecture series. We sat there and listened intently. I sat there listening intently. Because then he was gonna talk about compact impact. Remember that? There was no discussion. So disturbed, I went to the staffer and I said, "What happened? Let me tell you verbatim what he said." "Senator, the chairman, it was decided that they were gonna take out the discussion or anything with regards to compact impact reimbursements, and we can't tell you why. You're not allowed to know why." "What? You're going to tell us, this body? That you can't tell us? You can't give us an answer to the question?" And then I went to our Congresswoman and her staff, and I told her this. And she was perplexed. She promised that she was gonna get me an answer. "I will tell her. I'll find out. We'll find out." And Speaker, what's today? January what, 22nd, 21st? Apparently, we're insignificant. Congress doesn't need to tell us why. If they don't wanna tell us why for $400 million, what makes you think they're gonna tell us why for $15 billion? You wanna know why? Because we're insignificant. We don't have that vote that we can barter, that we can trade, that they can rely on. You know, the United States government always tells itself to be the most modern, the most powerful government in the world. Modern? They're using laws that are over 200 years old to justify why they won't even give us basic rights. That's modern? And if they're just as powerful as they claim to be, what are they afraid of? You know, when I was growing up, one of the most popular books, one of my most favorite books when I was growing up, was a book by, from a well-known and renowned author, a doctor. A guy named Seuss. The book was Horton, Here's a Who. Familiar with that story? Let me tell you what happened in that story. Story was about an elephant who was trampling, was trudging through the swamp one day, and then came across a speck, dust that happened to be a planet that contained the planet of Whoville. And that elephant can hear, but nobody else could. He was chastised, he was berated, he was belittled, he was told, you know, you're you're hearing things. It's ridiculous. And he tried his hardest to help these people out, this planet. And the way they got it is they had to break the barrier that was contained in that dust so that other people can hear. They had to shout, "We are here. We are here. We are here." I'm gonna use that same thing. "We are Guam. We are here. We are Guahan. We are here." Basic human rights. Something that we preach and we're often fighting wars in other nations to secure for them. We can't even have in here. But at the same time, I recognize the concern that Senator B.J. has. And I agree with Senator, the good Senator from Baragada as to what probably our congressional representatives should do. Take this and sit at the front of Congress and say, "I will not enter until I get an opportunity to represent my people right." But again, I'm gonna ask my colleagues, please, our forefathers, some of us literally, our fathers, set this up, created this path, continue that struggle. Let us not, let us make sure that we don't let them down, most especially, let's make sure we don't let our people down. "We are here. We are Guahan." I'm asking for my colleagues for their overwhelming and unanimous support on this. With that, Madam Speaker, I wanna thank you for the opportunity to speak on this and again reiterate my motion to move this to the third reading.
On the motion, without any objections, order. Thank you very much. We're now on Bill Number 182. 182? Okay, Senator Carval, you are recognized. Or Senator Pangolinas, the chair, oversight chair?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 30-182COR as an act to amend Section 6 of Public Law 2114 enacted on April 20, 1991, identify that slot number 513 Mariso to reflect the new designated number 528-2 Municipal of Mariso as introduced by Senator Carval to the third reading file, and then I defer to him for the discussion.
Thank you very much, Senator Pangolinas. Senator Carval, then, on Bill 182.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And again, I wanna thank the Chairman of the Committee, the Senator from Baragada, for moving expeditiously in the movement of this bill. Again, in a nutshell, Madam Speaker, this is another one of those measures that seeks to address a longstanding issue. But of course, with this longstanding issue, it's not an issue that deals with the federal government and their relations with their actions on the people of Guam. It actually is our local government and some of the complications that have arisen as a result of actions taken earlier and of course, of a need to make adjustments in the law to allow for effectuation of the laws that have already been passed. This in dealing with, again, Mr. Edward A. Cruz and Dolores Cruz and their estate and properties. And it's based on Public Law 21-14, which was passed in 1991. Of that law, again, Section 6, authorized exchange of land that was taken Of that law, again, Section 6 authorized exchange of land that was taken from the government, by the government, 10 years prior to the passage of Public Law 2014. The property was taken by the government to provide placement of a main sewer line to service the village of Melesu, and of course, is still at service at this point. Now, what occurred, Madam Speaker, was with the land exchange that was made, and based on the information available at the time, there was a designation for a lot number 513, which contained an area of approximately 2,475 square meters. There were two written appraisals taken of those properties, and however, during the, and of course, this was been conducted and approved by Department of Land Management. The Government of Guam, through the Department of Land Management, needed to survey the area of that land, that was lot number 513, because it had been previously unsurveyed and was previously property of the U.S. Navy. But when the lot number 513 was, and the surrounding area was surveyed, it was registered as the Government of Guam Lot Number 51, oh, excuse me, was redesigned as Lot Number 5282. The boundary markers for Lot Number 5282 have been certified, as of, again, recently as January 13, 2006, and was physically shown to me by both, again, the folks from Department of Land Management. So in actuality, Madam Speaker, because of some of the technical issues arising as a result of the differing lot number, and a lot number to this point that is not existent, there has been this issue. What this will do, will make corrections to the original, to the lot number, and then will, of course, allow for the effectuation and the realization of a law where the government had acquired properties, and now a need to redress that through land exchange. And again, Madam Speaker, this bill attempts to do that. Again, I'm asking my colleagues for their support. I wanna thank also the Chairman of the Committee for making the necessary amendments in order to ensure that this bill is clean, and does stand the litmus test for, again, movement. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And again, I'm asking for all your support.
Thank you very much, Senator Calvo. Senator Panglinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I wanna stand in support of the bill as introduced by Senator Calvo and as amended by the committee. This is an attempt by this government to resolve some of the injustices it has perpetrated on its own people with regards to land issues. It is something that my committee continues to work on, pretty much on a daily basis. And when these issues are brought to the attention of our committee, either personally by the individuals, or through the offices of other senators, we try to, and work with them to resolve these matters. You know, land is a very sensitive issue on Guam, and the abuse of land and its taking is not limited to the federal government. This government, our own government, has abused its powers in taking over lands and not redressing the damage that it has done to the people that it takes land from. There are many issues that continue to remain. Just last, I think a couple of months ago, we addressed the issue of the government taking the land by an action of this body, and holding it for years, and then when the family tried to develop their property, or even sell their property, we find that, oops, the government has a portion of it. And so, these things get technical, they get bogged down, they get lost in the shuffle, they get passed one senator into the next legislature, and unless the individual is determined, they sometimes just end up waiting and waiting, or they give up. And I think it's a travesty of justice when that happens, and that's one of the commitments we've had. One of the things we just did recently is request, and we did this earlier in our term, but we didn't get any cooperation, we're working with the new Director of Land Management, to ensure that he gives us an accounting of all the public laws that have been passed that provide for a land exchange for people of Guam, for the lands that the government has taken, and that this legislative body and prior legislations have authorized, but haven't been completed. And we want to look at those, we want to see why they haven't been completed, we want to see if there are things like what has happened here, in which lands were resurveyed, new maps were done, and when the owner goes back and says, "Okay, let's, can we just do this?" By the way, you can't do it, you need to fix it, because there's no more Lot 513. You know, and it doesn't make sense, when you know that 513 was changed to 528-2. And yet, they won't, because the law says 513. Even though the intent is clear, even though you can trace the land and the lot in the change, these government officials won't move on it, and the individuals get stuck, and they have no other redress but to come to this body to get us to change the law so that our government officials, and I don't blame these government officials, because, you know, they're there and they're trying to protect the government's interests, and we agree to that, and we certainly, you know, support that, but when it's absolutely clear and obvious that we're not asking for more than the original lot, that we're only asking for the same lot when the legislature enacted that, really, I don't know that it'll be that difficult to have just moved forward. But since they insist on it, and they've brought it to the attention of this body, I think we have an obligation to resolve that. So we're hoping that as we move along, that the Director of Land Management will provide this, our committee, in terms of what is still pending, and where we need to go from there, in order to redress some of the longstanding issues between our government of Guam and the people of Guam. And this is one of them, we did another one last session, and I'm sure we're gonna do more, because there are more issues that need resolving, that really doesn't take, shouldn't take an act of Congress, or an act of this legislature, but should just take the commitment of everyone to make sure that we do these, we make our people whole in a timely manner. There are many, many challenges, limited resources, but wherever we can do it, we will, we stand here in our commitment to doing that, and I wanna thank Senator Calvo for working with this family, and bringing it to the attention of our committee, and giving us the ability to work with him to push this forward. So, thank you, and Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. So on the motion to place on third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you very much. We are now on Bill Number 189. And let me see, who's the author? Senator James Spaldon, Senator B.J. Cruz, Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As Chairman of the Committee on Tourism, Cultural Fair Youth, and Public Broadcasting, I'm honored to move the bill introduced by Senator James Spaldon, to enact or create the 12th Festival of Pacific Arts Coordinating Committee, move it to third reading for voting, and third reading, and I'd ask for a short comment.
Please.
It's a bill as substituted by the committee, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chairman, I want to thank Senator Spaldon for being diligent and realizing, very soon after it was announced at the last Pacific, the FestPAC event in Samoa, that Guam had been selected for the site for the 2016 Games, that he immediately moved to have this legislation introduced to create the coordinating council to put it together. As is evidenced by the fact that a jurisdiction is chosen eight years in advance of the event, it takes a considerable amount of effort by the host community to put one of these events on. And so, that's why it was a whole eight years early, that, I mean, yeah, no, I guess, yeah, it was eight years, that the announcement for 2016 was made, and that Guam was designated as the host for the 2016 FestPAC. I think we need to immediately appoint, or the governor needs to immediately appoint a coordinating committee to start putting this thing together, to determine the site, start, starting to raise some funds, because I don't know if we as a committee will be able to afford to underwrite the cost of it, but private funds and foundation funds need to be found to underwrite the cost of hosting this. And so, I ask that the, my colleagues to please support this piece of legislation. The substitute version makes one addition, it allows for a member of the Mayor's Council to be appointed by the President of the Mayor's Council to sit on this commission. I know some of you may be looking and trying to figure out how, in the original bill, it goes A to D, and in the substitute, it goes A to F. That's because in the original bill, there's two Cs. So there really is only one addition to the coordinating committee that was added by the committee. We only, we just used the ones that were originally in the bill, added one, and I understand that one of our colleagues is considering having an additional appointee to the board, but I'd just like to ask our colleagues to please support this piece of legislation. It's imperative that the governor immediately appoint this commission, this coordinating committee, so that they can begin the work of putting this FestPAC together. Guam really redeemed itself in 1999 with the South Pacific Games that we hosted after the disaster of the 1975 South Pacific Games. And so, I'd like to make sure that we get off on the right foot for 2016, and when we host our first FestPAC, that we do so in a fashion that is befitting our people and our culture, and that we all are proud of what happens that year when we host the Festival of the Pacific Arts. And so, I ask for support from all the members, and I thank you for allowing me to speak for Senator Spaldon on this bill, and on behalf of our committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Speaker. On the motion, recognized, Senator Titewey.
Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of this Bill 189 regarding FestPAC, and it's very, very important that we recognize the efforts of our community, those who, through art, show their emotions, their feeling, their spirits, whether through carving or through painting, and of course, my most favorite, through music. And recognizing the makeup of this arts coordinating committee, and realizing the funding issues that they, that everyone who puts a concert or a festival together, they have, that it's important that you include a great marketing committee, somebody who's able to go out and fundraise for these events. And I think that's missing in the composition of this committee, where we should include, I thought first of including basically, you know, someone from the chamber, or someone from, you know, other areas Hotel and Restaurant Association, and felt that, okay, this is already showing mostly government agencies. So I would like to have an amendment and include, add Item G to this section, and include the Chairperson of the Board of Directors of the Guam Visitors Bureau or his designee. And this is important, because they do have privy to the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association, and they do have the, I think some of them are members of the Chamber of Commerce. And it's so important to have them included, because they do contribute so much to any events that are given, and something as this important, that I would like to add them to this committee.
Thank you very much, Senator Titewey. On the amendment, then, to include a new G, to include the Chair of the Board of Directors of the Guam Visitors Bureau, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
We have Senator Ogden, who would like to speak, and then Senator Rispio.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly stand in support of the measure, and also the amended version, but I just want to make just a slight modification or amendment, Madam Speaker, on page 2, line 18, where it says 30th Guam Legislature, I think the reference should be to the Guam Legislature as it transitions, because the event, the Festival of Arts, it will be conducted in 2016. So obviously, the Chair of the Tourism Committee entered the 31st, and I'm on the presumption that should the good Chair run in the next upcoming general election, that he will be successful, and obviously, continue his term. But I would like to propose that on line 18, that 3-0 TH be deleted, so that it would read Guam Legislature, so that it would be, it will continue, otherwise, unless that was purposeful, if that's the case, I just need some clarification in that regard, Madam Unless, Madam Speaker, the intention is to allow for the initial incumbent to fill this position as the committee is put together, to continue his seat, then I have absolutely no objection, and that's the intent.
What if the change, what if the title, again, of that committee changes? Well, I understand what you're saying, but then when you say, this is, this is an unusual mix this year, so I'm wondering whether you want to just...
It's fine, Madam Speaker, I mean, if the incumbent Chair of Tourism is gonna continue, regardless as to the composition of the next legislature, to me, if that's the intent, I'm fine with that, because I think that the Chair of Tourism has been a very strong advocate for the tomorrow culture and cultural preservation, but...
Can we take one minute break for...
Sure. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I should have been talking for nine. (laughter) Just present the, I was gonna say Vice Speaker, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, but Madam Speaker, the chairperson, it should really read subsection F, the chairperson of the committee on culture, comma, or its successor, or culture of the Guam Legislature or its successor. So you're absolutely right, the direct reference to the title may not carry on into the next legislative body. So if I can move for the, this particular subsection F to read the chairperson of the committee on cultural affairs of the Guam Legislature or its successor.
On the amendment without any objections, so-
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Rispio, you recognize on the motion?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, when I first looked at the composition of this commission, it was an even-numbered composition, even-numbered group until Senator Taitewei make the, moved the amendment which carried, it made it odd-numbered. But I also would ask the body for-
Oh, it's even now?
No, it-
Because C is three. One, two, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
It's eight.
Ten. A, B is two, C is three, says five, six, seven, eight, oh, I'm sorry.
And then the amendment made it odd, but I asked, I asked our colleagues to consider an amendment that would, something in the statute, something that's very dear to me when I was in the youth congress who were able to get Senator Ariola to pass a bill that required a youth representative in majority of the boards and commissions where there's no fiduciary responsibilities to that, to those members. So I, I then asked for consideration to make an amendment to allow for the speaker of the Guam Youth Congress or his designee. And then because that'll bring it back to even, in consultation with the good chairman, there's no objections on line 13 to make it three members, to move that to four members. So then you end up with an odd-numbered commission.
Okay, so the first, the first amendment is to include the-
Or, or I'm sorry, he's, he's saying, okay, the first, we'll divide the question. The first amendment is to add speaker of the Guam Youth Congress or his designee. That would be a-
Page. Okay, so that first amendment, then speaker of the Guam Youth Congress or his designee, any objections? Objections, so order.
And then the next one, Madam Speaker, is to give the speaker two appointments. So the speaker of the legislature who may appoint a representative, who may, speaker of legis, two appointments from the legislature could be the speaker or, or the speaker's designee. So we, an amendment that reflects the speaker gets to make two appointments.
Okay, so then for E, somehow then leave counsel, then be able to make that technical correction, but it will be two from the legislature and the speaker may, may be representative or appoint a representative.
Correct.
Okay, on that amendment, then, do we understand that, the clerks?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so without any objections, and so order. Vice Speaker, you recognize?
Before I close, I've been asked by Senator Telletatikwe to be named as a co-sponsor. With no objection, I'd like to name her as a vote.
Without objections, and so order.
And I'd like to move the, the bill down to voting file.
On the motion to place bill 189, then the voting, I mean, third reading file, without objections, so order. Bill number two, two, four, three.
No. Two oh eight and two one four, right?
I've got two, four, three is next.
What about the American?
Wait, no, on, on number eight on the list of the agenda is two, four, three. So Senator Ada, Senator Ada, would you like to move that? You want us to, Senator Ada?
No, what number?
Uh, two, four, three.
Two, four, three? No, I thought it's, is it two oh eight and two one four?
I have number eight on the reading file, two, four, three, unless I'm reading from a different agenda.
It's two, we have two oh eight and two one four.
We have the one eight nine.
We just finished one eight nine. Okay, we're gonna take one minute recess. Bill number two, four, three, and I recognize Senator Ada.
Madam Speaker, thank you very much. I move to place bill two, four, three as substituted by the Committee on Utilities, Transportation and Public Works and Veterans Affairs on the third reading.
And you want to speak on it?
We'd like to discuss it, yes.
Yes, please proceed.
Madam Speaker, what bill two, four, three does is really seeks to extend the implement, the effective date of when the new international building code is to be placed into effect and to replace the current uniform building code. Just a brief background, the international building code in a previous legislation, Public Law 30 dash 25, adopted, we, we, we moved to adopt the international building code because the uniform building code is really an obsolete document and, and has, has now been, been, its successor now is the international building code. And it's the international building code that then gets updated on a regular basis. You will not find updates to the uniform building code. So in essence, the uniform building code is now obsolete. Exactly what are the differences between the two codes, I really would not be, I, I, I cannot speak on that. However, certainly members of the engineering community, public works, came out to endorse the adoption of the international building code. Now, the effective date, bill two, four, three then seeks to extend the effective date to June 30th, 2010, because, simply because public works is just not ready, nor is the Guam Fire Department ready to be able to actually begin using the uni, the international building code as the, the standard from which to evaluate building designs and, and other requirements from which permits are issued. To get ready requires basically procuring the necessary standards, printed standards, getting training to the inspectors and the community, the stakeholders that are involved. The other thing that the bill does, of course, is it makes explicit reference to the fact that the adoption of the international mechanical code, the international plumbing code, international property maintenance code, the international fire code is mentioned in here that those also, in addition to adopting the international building code, that those relevant and associated codes will also be adopted. And that particular matter, in particular the international fire code, was really requested, the, the explicit adoption of that was requested by the director for the Guam Fire Department, despite the fact that when one takes a look at the international building code in their section 101.4.1, it does make explicit mention that the adoption of the international building code automatically also includes the adoption of these other associated codes. And so that, Madam Speaker, is really the gist of bill two, four, three, and I urge my colleagues to go ahead, to, to support the bill, giving the stakeholders more time to put this bill into effect. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. On the motion, I recognize Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly stand in support of the intent of bill number two, forty-three. I just have a few questions, please, Madam Speaker. I need some clarification from the chair of the committee.
Senator Ada, do you yield a question? Yes, please ask your question.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and Mr. Chairman. I think one of the comments and one of the questions during the course of the discussion at the public hearing was the necess, the need to adequately prepare for this particular implementation. And when there was reference to printing standards and then also acquiring the necessary training, this law would have taken effect, or the IBC code as provided in Public Law 30 dash 25, would have taken effect 180 days after the adoption or enactment of that legislation. Now, that date was in December. Hundred and eighty days after the enactment of that legislation, the government of Guam representatives still were not adequately prepared to implement it. Now we're looking at this setting a definitive timeline of June of 2010. My question is whether in fact the government of Guam agencies will be adequately prepared with the printing documents as well as the necessary training to be able to meet this particular timeline. Madam Speaker, if I can please get a-
Madam Speaker, the deadline of June 30th, 2010, I was really at the request of the Department of Public Works and the Guam Fire Department. So that was the date that they thought they would be ready to, to actually implement the new standards. Now, note though that the public hearing was held in, I believe in December. I'll have to check the committee report, but that was about almost a month ago.
December 3rd, yeah, that was December 3rd when the hearing was held, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I guess another question is, well, first of all, I just would hate to see us come back into this arena and looking at a definitive timeline that has been set and proposed by the government agencies and say, and with the request to extend it even further. So I guess one month after the public hearing, my question was leaning in the direction of, has there been any progress to acquire the necessary training materials, the standards, the printing standards, as well as the training of personnel? But I'm getting the sense that perhaps that has not moved as aggressively as, at least in my case, I would like to ensure to meet that timeline. Just a couple of other questions, Madam Speaker, and I know I shared this with the good chairman in terms of the transitional period. And one of the recommendations, I know this was a recommendation that was proposed by an individual that provided testimony during the course of the public hearing that perhaps a transitional period would be appropriate. And I'm trying to, to understand why a transitional period rather than a definitive timeline whereby the old code would no longer be existed, applicable, and the new code would take place. And that any application or any documents that are submitted, any complete documentation that's submitted and still under consideration as of that closeout date will fall under the guidelines and the standards of the existing code today. And that was a suggestion that was made and it was still, for some odd reason, I'm still trying to understand this, because if I were the government representative reviewing this and I say, okay, I have one of two options in a transitional period of 90 days, what would my inclination be, whether to apply it to the old code or to apply it to the new code? And that's really where the confusion may come in in terms of, of what the preference would be as a government representative trying to implement and comply with the existing law. So I, I spoke to the chairman of the committee, Madam Speaker, in terms, in reference to this, and he decided to provide this particular provision or retain this particular provision based on the recommendation of individuals out there. But it, to me, I, I just wanted to publicly state that I still have reservations about how it would be implemented when in fact you have two different standards, almost similar in nature, but apparently you have that transitional period of 90 days. And I think that having that cutoff timeline would be my personal preference in terms of looking at it and that any application that's submitted prior and on that date would be applic, the old code would be applicable and it would allow some of these architects and planners to appropriately implement that. I wanted to share that with you, Madam Speaker, and with the chairman, but I also have one other question here because I noticed that it could conceivably be a carte blanche approval, an adoption by this body. If you look at line five on page two, that line reads pursuant to the adoption of the IBC 2009, associated codes referenced in the IBC 09, and subsequent updates to the IBC 2009 are hereby adopted. Now, a concern that I have is obviously adopting provisions that are not enacted, that we do not visibly know, that could conceivably impact the building codes as we go through any expansion over the course of the next several years. And I really do have reservations about looking at that as a carte blanche adoption rather than adopting the IBC 2009 code. And then any subsequent adoptions can either go through the rules of the AAA process by the respective government of Guam agency for further modification and updates, or come back to this legislative body so that in fact there's that direct recognition and allowance for the community to be able to provide input as to whether it's going to be beneficial and applicable to the Guam environment. Because keep in mind that the IBC, the international building code is, is applicable across the board internationally as opposed to only site adapted to Guam. So that, that's another concern that I have. And Madam Speaker, if I can ask the chairman for his comments on that particular revision because I do have reservations in terms of providing that carte blanche approval for any subsequent amendments rather than what we have in place today.
Senator Ada, do you yield to the question?
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Yes, Madam Speaker, first of all, you know, the original law was to, to switch from using the, what we knew as the uniform building code to what is now used in the building community as the international building code. In fact, it is the latter that gets reviewed on a periodic basis and is updated based on new standards or, or technological advances in the building industry. I, I, I think that the law, the policy that we passed was the policy which chose to adopt one standard over another. I think that once we've adopted then the international building code, subsequent revisions, those revisions are really reviewed by a technical, highly competent body as to whether they should be accepted, adopted by the international building community. Now for us to- Now, for us to have to go through, I don't know how frequently these revisions are made, and so I wouldn't want to go there. The other, the other thing, though, of course, is that it could create a lot of confusion if, let's say, a company wants to design or whatever, and the designing company is in the mainland, you know, they have to guess, well, let's see, does Guam conform, you know, does this design conform to what Guam wants, or can they rely on this international building code that is universally accepted? So, I wouldn't go taking on that particular burden of us conducting AAA and reviewing these things because I think it would just really slow down the process of revisions being adopted.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Madam Speaker. I still have serious reservations about accepting any subsequent updates other than what we already have in place. I mean, today, we have a standard that is agreed upon by the local architects or local planners, the government of Guam representatives. And then, I understand where the Chairman is coming from in terms of looking at, perhaps some of these modifications are going to be slight modifications, but are they site-adaptable to the Guam community? Because this one singular line says that regardless as to what provisions are updated, that that automatically would be adopted by virtue of this, the enactment of this provision. And I still have serious reservation because it is a carte blanche adoption. And the statement that the professionals and expertise, paraphrasing, the professional expertise are the ones that review this, yes, but then the question is, based on their review, is it a provision that would be adaptable to the Guam community considering all of our circumstances and considering all of our expertise here? If, for example, one particular provision is automatically adopted by, through the International Building Code, amendment is made, and many of the architects and many of the government officials say, I'm sorry, we're not able to implement that, or we disagree with that, they cannot disagree, it's adopted. Now, they have to come before this body and get it adopted, or go through the AAA process and extract that particular provision because it would otherwise be codified and be a recognized reg and guideline of this community of Guam. And that's really where the reservation I have, because if it read something to the effect and subsequent updates to current, to the date of enactment of this provision, then that's fine. But the way it reads right now, it says subsequent updates to the IBC 2009, what if the amendments are made in 2011, that would not necessarily be applicable to the community of Guam, it would already be adopted by virtue of code and by virtue of this legislation should it be signed into law. So, that's really a reservation that I have because when we're talking about building codes, Madam Speaker, we're talking about a lifespan of anywhere from 30-plus years, 40-plus years of many of these structures being in place. And if it's not site-adaptable to the Guam community, then I certainly have concerns in regards to that. And I understand the expertise, I understand the professionals out there, that they're going to bring this to the attention of the legislative body, but that would really be after the fact. And our people are going to be left in a bind, our implementers, government representatives, and saying, hey, it's the law, it's part of the code, you've got to carry it out until it's changed by the legislative body or through the AAA process. And I have serious reservations about that. But conceptually, I was there at the hearing, and I understand the need to be able to adopt this and the support for the IBC 2009 standards, but not necessarily any subsequent changes. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
So, you're not proposing then an amendment? Oh, he's just raising a concern. Okay. On the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak before I ask the Chairman to close on Bill 243? I'm going to take a minute recess.
Should be followed by comma, subject to the review and adoption of the Guam PEALS Board, that's P.E.A.L.S., the Professional Engineer and Licensed Surveyors Board. They're the body that actually reviews our technical community for registration and other competency requirements.
So, on line six, page two, after the word adopted, add a comma, and then the word subject to the review and adoption of the PEALS Board?
Correct.
Okay, on the amendment, are there any objections? No objections or order. Thank you very much, Senator. On the motion then to send Bill 2, oh, you want to speak? Senator, please, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I certainly appreciate the transition. One of the reasons why this bill's necessary is that it's almost nomenclature correction because the original Uniform Building Code and the adoption thereof was something that I had worked on in a previous legislature, and the adoption of that code and subsequent updates to the code was something that I had worked on. And we automatically adopted the code, so it's pretty much up to date. What has happened is that in the international practice of architects, engineers, and designers, that they've just moved away from the Uniform Building Code, and it's kind of referred to with some modifications. Now, everybody refers to the old Uniform Building Code as the International Building Code. And so, whether you're designing in America, it used to be if you're designing in America under that system, it was called the Uniform Building Code, then if you were designing in Europe or Japan, it was called the International Building Code. And the two were pretty much the same, but the United States practice referred to it as UBC. And so, what's happened is they've just come under one body and under one standard, and that standard instead, it could have easily been called the Uniform Building Code, but it's now called the International Building Code. And with these minor changes in the requirements, everybody refers to it as IBC, so nobody publishes a UBC anymore. And so, that's why this is necessary. So, it's not like we have been unsafe in our building standards and design criteria because we've always been up to date and kept abreast of the modern Building Code and the modern code that includes fire protection, earthquake, and all these standards. So, I just want to know that in this move, we're not even, we weren't less safe before, and that we will be more safe under this. We will be under the same standards as the rest of the world in referring to what those individuals in the rest of the country and architects that now do cross-border designs in the different jurisdictions of the world have this one manual to refer to, and the manual's title is IBC. So, even this change, I just want to ensure to the public that it really doesn't mean that our UBC was inferior or was less safe. I think it's just to say, we'll continue, but we'll have one standard that the rest of the world refers to as the IBC, and we'll just keep in concert with that design criteria, which is pretty much the same as the UBC. I do want to just share the same concern with regards to when do we transition? And, you know, there's a saying that work expands to the time available to do it, so that if we give somebody a task and we say you have 30 days, most likely, you'll get it done in 30 days. If you give somebody the same task and you have, you give them 90 days, almost assuredly, they're going to take 90 days. So, as long as you could give them more time, they'll fill that time and take that time that they need. But the concern raised by the Senator from Zonia is correct. When do we actually cut the timeline? And so, with this extension to six months, perhaps it's time that we tell everyone that if you're designing a project now, you better complete that design now and submit it before the effective date, and your design will be reviewed and approved with the current UBC and its minor differences with the IBC. If you're designing a project today and it's going to take you a year to design it, then you'd better design it based upon the IBC because when you submit it a year from now or even eight months from now, it will be reviewed and approved pursuant to the Building Code of the International Building Code. So, make it more definitive rather than one or the other for that 90-day period. So, I'm not sure how to best language that. Shall be instituted whether the UBC 94, the IBC shall be applicable for a period of no more than 90 days after June 30, basically. So, you have until June 30. I'm not sure that we're doing, you know, it does create that confusion of what are my design standards and what if I miss the deadline? And, you know, so, I think if we say we want it June 1st, then if your project is going to be approved after June 1st, design it pursuant to the IBC, and if it's going to be submitted and for approval before, then we, Public Works knows that they'll do it according to the UBC. And this gives clear direction to the individuals at Public Works, that there can be no influence of, if it's my friend, I'm going to ask him to do it for the UBC, and if he's not my friend, I'm just going to say, sorry, go back, redesign it, and do it to the IBC. So, maybe either we get somebody to definitively decide, this is it or that's it. And the idea would be, when do you submit your application? The other way is that for a 90-day period after that, that it is the project, submittal project developer that decides. He has between, and that kind of gives him a little bit more freedom to say, I want this reviewed by, if it's, you know, 90 days after June 30, I would like to see it reviewed under the UBC rather than the IBC. So, there's no ability of the individual at Public Works to favor any kind of, to have any kind of favoritism left to his discretion on which one to implement. It could be that one would be more difficult or that more work would have to be done. So, how do we give the developer some assurance that he's going to be treated fairly and evenly as every other developer during that 90 period? If we left it too much to the discretion of the building official, then we're placing that building official in a position where somebody can say and charge him with, hey, you know, this is favoritism because you're asking me to do IBC and I have to do a little bit more work, and you're increasing the cost of my developer. I mean, I can just see, you know, one of our developers saying, see, the government's screwing me again, you know, because they could go with UBC, but no, they're going to make, they're going to tell me to do it because IBC, because they don't like me and I challenge them, or something like that. So, maybe the solution would be that for that 90-day period, that they can, shall be instituted, either the UBC or IBC standards shall be applicable for it, shall be at the request of the applicant for a period of 90 days, of no more than 90 days. So that the applicant himself can decide, and it's still good, we don't open up our public officials to the charge of being favorites or not favorites, we don't open up the government of Guam to criticism of our building officials exercising favoritism or not. So, I would like to say, to then maybe propose an amendment, whereas on line 13, shall be wherein either the UBC 94 or IBC 94 as requested by the applicant...
Line 13, page...
Line 18, page 1. Yeah, 18, 18. Oh, okay, 18. I apologize. Refuse me. The construction is wrong here, but, yeah. So, shall be instituted...
Wherein the applicant shall request...
Shall...
Either the UBC or the IBC standards...
Right. Yeah, right?
Yep.
Okay. Wherein either the UBC or IBC...
Wherein the applicant shall...
Right, wherein the applicant shall...
Request...
Shall designate either the IBC...
Yeah.
Shall designate either the UBC 94 or the IBC 09 standards shall be applicable for the...
That doesn't sound right, you guys, shall, anyway.
I think we're going to need to just write it...
I think so. We'll take a minute recess.
You guys shall, anyway.
I think we're going to need to just write.
I think so. We'll take a minute recess. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place Bill 308 as introduced on the third reading file. But I'd like to just briefly explain what the.
There being no objection.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the only change in the bill is actually making an extension. Originally it was set for January of this year. But all it is is just now to extend the time in which the council members should meet on March 8th. Because we do not, we want to be able to avoid that after one year, then with that current bill is that then all councils that have not met or commissions or boards, then we have to kind of start all over again. So that was my request for an extension. The only amendment that I want to ask is to have Senator Teletay Tegui as a third group sponsor.
Any objection? On the cosponsorship, no objection. Go ahead. Does anybody wish to speak on the bill? Any objection to placing the bill in third reading file? I mean into voting file. Do you wish to make the motion?
Yes, please. I'd like to make a motion to place Bill 308 as introduced in the third reading file.
Any objection? Hearing no objection. My bill was. Okay, there's a motion to recess until tomorrow morning at 9:00. Please be punctual. We'll be. We will have a, we'll be voting on the overrides and the confirmations.